Well, you're not. Yeah, I'll give you this pen. I just have to check my number here. I'll do this one here.
Former mayor.
How are you? That's so good. You gonna sign in here too? It is good to see you. Let me check my number here, Pastor. I'll give you this.
Thanks.
Which one is off the agenda?
This is the agenda. This is...
No, I want the other one.
Yeah, I do have some questions, because I know with that 37 million that I've been paid...
I'm gonna talk about that today.
Because I knew you'd gotten started on it. Thank you. Because I was trying to find out what everybody wanted to do. Well, not everybody, but you know, what ideas from people.
And I wanted to give that 10 million dollars back that they put in the budget, because they overspent the budget.
I saw that. That was great of you to notice that. Pontiac deserved that amount of money, that extra amount.
The citizens need that. You know, people need their rent fixed and all this kind of stuff. I'm looking for a number. Here's your...
Okay.
Here's your pin.
Oh, you can just leave it there.
Okay.
Hey, Councilman Parker. Ask them here if they're ready. Ask them here if they're ready. You ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the 55th session of the 11th council. At this time, we have invocation. Councilman Parker, could you please introduce?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to introduce Pastor Les Mangum of the St. John's United Methodist Church, Pontiac, Michigan. He will be giving us our invocation this evening.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads with a prayer inviting, invoking the Spirit. Gracious God in heaven, we turn to you as humble as we know how. Lord, I ask, on behalf of everyone here, that you would just let your Spirit be present. We know that you're present, oh God, but sometimes it's difficult to open up wide enough to receive all of you. So help us, oh God, to receive you even more. Bless the mayor, the president of council, and the council members, and the people that gather to do a work in this city. Hallow your work in our hands, oh God. May it be your work. Lord, help us to be sensitive to one another and understanding the labor that is required to do this great work. Lord, we don't know what's going on with each other from time to time. So help us to pray for one another, to support each other, and to know that council leaders and our mayor, they stay up all night sometimes trying to figure out problems, solutions. So be especially with them, oh God. In the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, and we respect all other faiths, we say amen.
Amen. At this time, please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
At pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd just like to... Actually, the president is here, so I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carrington. We rise now for a moment of silence as a community for those that we've recently lost. There are many names indeed, and next week we will capture those, but hopefully no more will be added. So please join us as we remember those in your neighborhood, in your families, in your congregations that we have lost in recent days, and lift up their families and our entire community as we do. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Present.
Goodman?
Here.
James?
Here.
McGinnis?
Present.
Nicholson?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Rutherford?
Present.
President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. All members present and voting, and therefore no council members need to be excused. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, supported by Councilman Nicholson. That motion is before us. Are there any amendments, discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as presented. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. This week it concludes, it includes last week's council meeting minutes. Roll call and adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. Thank you, Pro Tem Carrington, for handling the first few minutes while I was racing in those final moments from work. I do want to say happy birthday to Pastor Deserou. You're here. Happy 100th anniversary to the St. John congregation. We were honored to have a city council tribute presented Pastor Mangum to your congregation. We are now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials that wish to address the community here at the city council meeting? Hearing none. We are now at agenda address. President Pro Tem Carrington, were there any requests this evening?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Ms. Florence Anthony, is it Etifia? Etifia? Yes, ma'am, you have the floor. Oh, ma'am, you have to take the... Yes, you gotta go to the microphone.
So that way it can be recorded and those watching at home... That's quite all right. We just want to make sure that those watching at home can hear what you have to say during your agenda address.
Thank you, everyone that's here, every human being that's here and those that aren't here in these times that we're having now. And it's good to see that we're coming together, black, white, man, woman. And my name is Florence Victoria Anthony Etifia. Etifia, I married a Nigerian divorced, of course, but anyway, it was a good marriage. And I decided to keep the name because of the civil rights movement that we were going through. So I kept the name Etifia. Proud of it. Proud of this city, too. I grew up in this city. Went through Pontiac schools, taught in this city 38 years, lived in the city of Pontiac on Widdemore on the south side, and moved to Auburn Hills, but I'm still in the Pontiac School District. I live near Rogers School.
Ma'am?
I couldn't find what I needed.
Ma'am, I wanted to just draw your attention. Can you hear me okay?
What I'm going to do now is to address Resolution Number 6, which is about the youth. There shouldn't be any discrepancy on who's responsible for the youth in Pontiac. Both the school board and the city council are responsible for the youth in Pontiac. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
Hello, I'm speaking to the agenda item regarding the November 8th election.
The communication?
Yes, that's on the agenda. I am here following the statement I made, an agenda addressed last week, to talk about the November election, 8th election, which is rapidly coming forward. I came to find out from council or anybody if they knew who had sent out this flyer from the address 270 South Telegraph that said the Pontiac City Council and Mayor unanimously agreed to vote yes on city proposal 1. So I understand after I left the meeting, there were several, three of you council people who said that you didn't give anybody permission to say that you supported this particular ballot proposal to raise city taxes. That may be true, but I think the confusion lies in that you voted unanimously to put it on the ballot. And so generally, if leaders put things on the ballot, they do that because they support them or they want them to be passed or they think they're good for the city. So that's where the confusion is. And I guess by distancing yourself and saying you didn't support it, that means that you rubber stamped it on the urging of the mayor and the president of the city council, Mike McGinnis. So that just is a little issue for people who are looking to our leaders to help to set the tone for what is needed. Now, by distancing yourselves from this decision, it brings to question with important issues that are coming up that you need to decide, such as the ARP, American Rescue Plan money, $38 million that we fought for. And that's supposed to be for citizen and business COVID-19 relief. That has never been given to the citizens. There should be a plan coming forth. And we hope that you will carefully consider that and make sure that that money goes for citizen relief and is not rubber stamping. Similarly, the mayor has said he's going to bring a proposal to you for recreational marijuana in the city. We similarly hope you will carefully consider that and not rubber stamp a proposal with the votes.
That does conclude your agenda address.
Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Thank you very much. Agenda number two, or item number two on the agenda. I'm concerned about, is this the same contractor that just recently got... I know you're not gonna answer me now, but maybe the mayor or whoever can answer later. Is this the same contractor that has the contract for the manhole repair or replace? And if so, I'd like to know if it is or not. I'd like to know that is this an agreement or is this a contract, this item number two? And if so, I'm wondering if the contractor has made any effort to employ or utilize city-based contractors or services from the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Darlene Clark? You got it for agenda address. You won't... Okay, thank you. That concludes our agenda address. President McGinnis.
All right, with that, we are at agenda item number one, an ordinance to amend the city of Pontiac's purchasing ordinance to permit the city's purchasing agent to make non-major expenditures up to $2,500 without engaging in the practice of competitive bidding. As with any ordinance, adoption, or amendment, that requires two readings per our city's charter. So this is the first of that, at least two readings. So we will not be voting on it tonight. It will come before us next week and if this body chooses further. So with that, we give the floor to Mayor Grimaldi and the administration to let us know what we're looking at.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to invite our purchasing manager, Alicia Marn, to speak on this agenda item. This came to our attention at her recommendation and based on her expertise and experience and insight. So without further ado, Ms. Marn.
Good evening, council. Good evening to our mayor and our deputy mayor. I will be talking about the purchasing ordinance as indicated earlier for amending, excuse me, purchasing ordinance amendment request. When I was hired as purchasing manager, I established four objectives initially coming into this position. One was being to review existing processes, policies, and procedures. Two, to identify where the pain points are, where things are not operating as efficiently. Three, to make recommendations for process improvements. And four, to implement new processes, policies, and procedures. I think I'm extra nervous for some reason tonight. I don't know why. So the current case is that we are experiencing a bottleneck in our procure-to-pay process. That's basically because of lack of supporting documentation when individuals are submitting requisitions for approval. Right now, three quotes are required regardless of the cost of goods and services. The bottleneck is occurring at the purchasing approval stage. So when I receive a requisition, I'm looking at a couple of things. I'm looking at, does this purchase have three quotes? If no, is it associated with the contract? If no, is it related to a cooperative agreement that's already established? And if no, is this for an emergency purchase? Some of these questions may lead to further discovery, meaning additional questions, depending on what the purchase is. Next slide. In fiscal year, last fiscal year, we wanted to look at the data to see what we were processing in volumes and what that estimated cost would be for processing requisitions for the city of Pontiac. Last year, we processed 1,970 requisitions for fiscal year July 2021 to June 2022. 1,280 of those requisitions were under $2,500. It takes an average of 30 minutes for the requisition to go through the procure-to-pay process. The city spent approximately $34,475 for the requisition PL process. The graph that you see before you is the estimated cost to process requisitions. It's a pictorial view. So as you can see, the bulk of the requisitions processed was 22,400. That's the estimated cost to process those requisitions. And they were all under $2,500. So the bulk of our processing efforts are for purchases that are less than $2,500. Here's another pictorial view of our estimated cost. As you can see, this is our purchasing pie. That's what I call it. And 65% of that pie is for purchases less than $2,500. So this is just giving you another pictorial view of the volume that we're processing. In summary, what the amendment will accomplish is removal of the bottleneck occurring for purchases less than $2,500. It will also reduce processing costs and assist with establishing purchasing policy and procedures for daily operations. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor, followed by Councilman Nicholson.
Yes, first I want to commend you on your research and connection compiling that data. So just got a couple of quick questions concerning that as it relates to the $2,500. Are these mostly, these purchases are mostly established businesses like, I said something like Home Depot and those type staples?
They're maintenance, repair, operating, office supplies, whatever you can think of that we need in terms of city services and goods. Those are what make up those requisitions.
Okay. And my other question is that are these some of the things that are small businesses in the city of Pontiac are able to do? So because I definitely would like to see more of our community businesses being able to take part in what the city has to offer when it comes to those small contracts that they can actually take care of.
So we do participate with local businesses. I know for one, DPW makes sure that when something needs repair, they're contacting vendors within the city of Pontiac. They've been really good about that. We want to keep that precedence going forward, making sure that, and this will be part of our purchasing policy with the approval of council and the mayor and deputy mayor, of course, but making sure that a percentage of what we buy is for local businesses. So that's the goal, to make sure that they're being included in that process.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Councilman Nicholson?
Thank you. As these purchases make their way through our accounting system, are they flagged in any way to say this was one of those purchases that was not quoted? Would there be a way to pull a report of these to be reviewed?
The flag that lets me know that it's not quoted is there's no attachments. So I don't know if we can pull a report for the requisition stating that there is no attachment, because if that's the case, then we would be able to identify like a number. I can check to see with BSNA, because that's the solution that we're using to see if I can get a report like that.
Yeah, I think as a follow-up, my concern, of course, is, and I'm sure you'll be in interest of yours, is to look for those similar situations from a purchasing perspective, you know, how often are we doing this? So that way we could potentially find, you know, better, more cost-effective ways for things like Staples or Home Depot or, you know, something that could be routed to a local vendor. And then, two, just for the sake of going through, having gone through a, you know, forensic audit process, coming into our annual audit and thinking about controls, just if there is a way, and that will be my question for it to come to the second reading, to hopefully get an answer on that. For then, maybe the, once a year, the subcommittee, the finance committee could review it with you in one of our subcommittee meetings with, you know, the general public invited, just so that's a comfort, you know, a place of comfort. I think it's a good, very efficient thought, but I want to just see that there's a balance behind it as well.
Yes, I definitely welcome that. One thing I want to mention is that we are looking at cooperatives a lot, you know, for things that are in place already in terms of contracts, so that they're not have to, having to go out to get three quotes. Like Staples is one of the suppliers that is participating in the My deal, which is a cooperative. So they don't have to get quotes for office supplies right now. So just looking at what other areas that we can pull in cooperatives, so that's not a requirement. But also, I think training is an element of this as well. The requisitioner knowing what the policy is and then showing them how to process requisitions. So that's something that is a goal of mine, is just to start training internally. And then, once the policy is in place, which I have a deadline of the end of this year to have, but a draft will be circulating prior to that to get feedback from the appropriate parties. But those are just some of the things that we're looking at. But the bottleneck is created because they don't have the three quotes, and then I'm contacting them like, where's your three quotes? And trying to get that and attach it or trying to find out if there is a contract associated with it, because then that would be the supporting documentation that satisfies that requirement.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this first reading. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to chime in that absolutely we welcome communications around these expenditures with the subcommittee, and we're happy to provide that information to the full council as well in whatever form the council would prefer. So whatever communication council would like to see around these, we're all for. Secondly, I just wanted to give the council a heads up that I know that there's a broader review of purchasing policies that Ms. Marn is engaged in right now as well. And so there will likely be some additional suggestions coming from her in the next week or two. But we didn't want to hold up this pending some of the other reviews that are going on. on as well.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
One final item to really highlight that Ms. Martin brought up is that currently the way the ordinance is written, every purchase, and I have to stress the word, every purchase, has to go through a competitive process, the three bids being an example of a competitive process. So for example, if for whatever reason DPW, now this would be a very odd case, but it's something that could actually happen. DPW was fixing something in City Hall and needed to go buy screws, they can't just go buy screws. They have to get three quotes to buy screws right before they can do that. So that is why this is being brought forward, to make it clear that items under a certain threshold don't need to have at least three quotes. That's all.
Any further discussion on this first reading? I want to conclude by saying thank you, purchasing manager Martin, for your thorough review of our processes, the contracts, ensuring that everything is tight and right, especially following the findings from our forensic audit that looked at the past eight years and found that there was definite room for improvement. And we're grateful to have this as one item so that we can improve our processes for the Pontiac taxpayers and those property owners in our city. With that, that concludes the first reading. This will be back with us next week. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the city to enter into an agreement with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions for pavement repairs not to exceed $2,860,019.40 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
Some move.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. That motion's before us. Mayor Grimaldi, cue us up.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I want to turn it over to Mr. Cooley to get into the details here, but before I do, I did want to just provide some information in response to the questions that were asked earlier. It is Great Lakes Contracting that is responsible for replacing manhole covers, to answer that question. In addition, Great Lakes Crossing is active, Great Lakes Contracting, rather, excuse me, is actively hiring, and in fact, like so many employers right now, has a shortage of employees and workers. So they're very eager to hire folks. So if folks are interested in working for them, please apply to them. And moreover, let us know if you're a Pontiac resident and you're applying to them, let us know so that we can encourage them as a city contractor to hire more Pontiac residents. So the more we know about Pontiac residents who are applying there, the more we can emphasize to them the importance of hiring Pontiac residents and utilizing the names of applicants is helpful as we lean on contractors to do the right thing and expand economic opportunity for Pontiac folks. Yes, it is a contract, I mean, agreement, contract, they're two names for the same legal precept. So I think that answers all the questions that were posed. Mr. Cooley, why don't you get into the details of the contract?
Good evening. Yes, this is a contract that we put in RFP out for to make joint and longitudinal repairs to some of the concrete pavement roads that we have within the city. More specifically, it would be Baldwin Avenue north of Walton to the city limits. It would be Beverly Street between Highwood and Jocelyn Avenue, Telegraph Extension, which is the city limits to Walton Boulevard, and then also Elizabeth Lake Road, which would go from State Street to Telegraph Street. So within them areas, you could see with what we put in the packet there, I laid out all the plans of, you can see all the joint repairs that they plan to make within them areas just to bring that road up to speed. It's very similar to what we did to Orchard Lake Road, you know, several years back where we're, we're actually cutting the joints out and making section repairs within the roadway instead of totally reconstructing the road.
Thank you for that, and we're grateful. Obviously, many Pontiac residents and people that work in the city of Pontiac are no strangers to the difficulties of those particular stretches. So we're not talking about a complete, you know, curb-to-curb replacement of the road or resurfacing. You're cutting out essentially the busted up seams or connection points that are in the most deteriorated shape and replacing the concrete there. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct. And anybody that's went up to Great Lakes Crossing will notice that the road commission had done that just north of the city limits there, up into Auburn Hills. And it's, it's a very similar pattern of what we would do. We would cut out those deteriorated sections and replace them with new pavement. And it would also do some longitudinal lines that where the lanes join together, would do some, some section repair in there as well.
When will be the anticipated target for this work being completed?
So we're pretty late in the season, and we do have some, not we ourselves, but the cement factories have a shortage going on currently. We're very hopeful to get this contract approved and to get some, some of Baldwin Avenue north done before winter, and then the rest of this would be done in the spring.
So the worst offender, Baldwin Road north of Walton Boulevard, the target is to have that done before the calendar year is up?
Correct. That's what we're pushing for, and that's what we're, what we push the contractor, that would be what the DPW department is looking for from them.
Bearing in mind, a lot of this is beyond, you know, sort of external factors that are beyond our control, including the weather, but it's important to know what the rain quarter. Councilman Parker and then Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, sir. Just one quick question. Is this the same company that did Orchard Lake Road?
No. If I remember correctly, Orchard Lake was done by a company called Seperoni.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson has the floor.
Do you find that when these repairs are made, that it tends to be the seam then is where we're back filling potholes?
Typically, on these concrete pavements, it's the, yeah, it's the joints where the joints were made together, where you're getting a lot of your deterioration and where the road's coming apart. And that's what they'll do is go in and widen them out and repair them.
Elizabeth Lake Road had this similar work done maybe some years ago because it seems that when you drive down Elizabeth Lake Road, it seems to be like, like you're going over belts. Like it's, it's, I don't know if that's actual belts that are under the road or whether or not it's the seams that we're feeling, but...
So what you're probably feeling is like a rubber sealer within the joints, and your tires are kind of sticking to it a little bit and are making that kind of clicking noise or tapping noise.
So has the process evolved from when we've used this sort of cut section, replace section?
So it's, it's a lot of the same process. They have obviously newer technology, newer tools that smooth it out a little better, do a little better job of getting a better ride quality.
Thank you.
Councilwoman James, then President Protam Carrington.
Was this the low bidder for this work?
Yes, it was. I included the bid tab within the packet.
I didn't see that.
I do know when I printed it off, it was quite small and hard to read. I printed it off a little bit larger. And I do believe, so the engineer's estimate that we got from our engineering firm was just, just a touch over 3 million, and this bid come back in at 2.8. So it was underneath the engineer's estimate, and they are the low bidder as well.
Okay, yeah, it would be good to have that page. And then, just as a general comment, none of this particular question, none of the information we received is readable. And, you know, that's, that's just unacceptable. When we get information, you know, when we get these packages, we need to be able to make decisions on them, and they have to be readable. They have to be readable. So please, let's, let's not give us packages that we can't read, with information in it that we can't read.
Which speaks to the bid package spreadsheet, but then also just the quality of the maps that show the aerial views. I was able to try and distinguish some of it, but it was really, really difficult just because of the reproduction of it. And I imagine it's because they're turning in large blueprints on blueprint paper, and so it's hard to translate that. But if there's strategies that the administration can employ so that way, not only we can be crystal clear on what the dimensions and scope of work is, but so that way the public can as well. Thank you for flagging that, Councilman James. And I know Protam, that was your question as well?
Yes, that was my question.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the city to enter into an agreement with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions for pavement repairs not to exceed $2,860,019.40 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Semen Yays, no names.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the 2022 Michigan Department of Transportation Safety Grant for Auburn Avenue Safety Project Number 22-5459? Administration, you have the floor.
Well, Director...
It's a move.
Sorry about that. So it's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. Thank you, Protam Carrington. Administration.
Director Cooley is already at the lectern, so I will let him speak.
Yes, this is a similar grant to what we brought a few weeks ago for Walton Boulevard. This is for Auburn Avenue, and this is a traffic signal modernization and some crosswalk upgrades to several intersections from Hill Street all the way down to Carriage Circle. This is a safety grant from MDOT that totals $600,000. They're projecting that the city's cost will be about $199,000 on top of that $600,000. So total price of the, of the bid would be around $799. And like I said, this, this does several intersections, and it upgrades the ADA ramps at all the sidewalks at the intersections. It gives the crosswalks the, the touchpads so that there's crossing systems. And I believe it's putting in a couple of actual hawk systems to cross down there by Carriage Circle and a couple of different areas in that section of Auburn where there's not a traffic signal to cross at.
Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. I thought it might be helpful if you explained what a hawk crossing system is for the, for the general public, and also if you can speak to the interface between this project and the traffic safety study that was done and any engineering or design work that's been done on Auburn longer term, that would be great.
Yeah, so a while back when our former city engineer was here, Abdul Siddiqui, the council had passed a SEMCOG grant for a traffic study for Auburn Avenue, and those dollars were used in the design of what this system is here that we currently are wanting to put into place. A hawk system, I don't know the exact acronyms for what it stands for, but it's basically a walk system, very similar in style to what's on Telegraph Road so that pedestrians can walk up to that system, hit the pad button, it'll create a lighting system that'll stop the cars so that the pedestrians will have a safe pathway to walk across the street at the different areas down there near Carriage Circle and I believe Michigan Avenue was, Michigan Midland in those areas. Also, what the mayor alluded to, there's design plans and our capital improvement plans to do some paving work on Auburn Avenue. I believe that's in the '25, '26 fiscal year, and all this is integrated together. So the work that we're doing now won't be interfered with any of the construction plans that we do, we do in the future.
Thank you for that question, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one other question. I recently talked with some residents who wanted to make sure that any crosswalks had an audible component so that those who are visually impaired could hear a countdown of the amount of time left to cross the street. Is that something that we can look at for this?
I will look into that, but I believe that may be part of what this system is because they're all under the ADA compliance, and I believe we would need that for that compliance. But I, but I will check into that and verify.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. This is something that will be a very positive impact on the east side of our community. I'm curious what our anticipated timeframe is for the, the intersections that have been identified for this particular safety grant project.
So typically, these are let out through MDOT. So after this is approved here, we get them, they approve, signed approved contract, they'll do a letting process, and then most likely, this work would probably start in the spring. Some of this can be done in the, in the fall and winter areas. It just depends on timelines of when it gets let out and, and the contractor's availability.
Understood. I want to thank staff and administration that did the work leading up to this, including our former city engineer, Abdul Siddiqui. As you mentioned, the city council earlier this year voted on that safety grant for the design from SEMCOG, so that was able to not be incurred. The cost wasn't incurred by us taxpayers. And I know that the residents that live along Auburn Avenue, east of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, it's going to make a big difference where there's a safer pedestrian options because there have in past been injuries and very serious pedestrian and vehicle collisions. Did you have a hand, Councilman Nicholson?
I do. I'm sorry. Because I have a similar issue in my district where we did some modernization over in Voorhees and Orchard Lake Road, and then there's been accidents and some of those enhanced poles and crosswalks have been taken out, do they share where we can purchase these replacement items? Are these replacement items are using easily found or attained?
So these are readily available because it's an MDOT standard that's used throughout not only the city but other communities as well. And the road commission for Oakland County has all the standards and all the specs to purchase these and reinstall them, and they are our contractor for our traffic signals. The one there at Voorhees, it's on order, and I did some background checking to try to get an ETA on one that's going to get put up, and I haven't got an answer back yet.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. That's good.
Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Yes, just also, just to give you a form, I don't know if you know where Orchard Lake is in Bagley. There's one that's down, the one, the rise, the street's going to fell down.
Right at Orchard Lake and Bagley?
Like somewhere they actually hit it, and so it's to the ground, the ones that you're about to repair, just the one.
I will have that repaired.
Thank you so much. That's all.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the 2022 Michigan Department of Transportation Safety Grant on the Auburn Avenue Safety Project 22-5459. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Semen Yays, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Thank you for your time, sir. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment?
Some move.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. This proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, 2023 is transferring out of the capital improvement fund GL account 445000288.000, unearned revenue $518,224.41, and transfer it into the capital improvement fund GL account 445000674.101, SKATP acronym for skate park. Contribution from 101, $55,000. Transfer into the capital improvement fund GL account 445000675.000. Skate park contribution from private source, $338,224.41, transfer into the capital improvement fund GL account 445000528.000. Skate park federal grant other, $125,000. And increase the budget appropriation in capital improvement fund GL account 445699976.001. Skate park building addition improvement for a total of $518,224.41. So that's a lot of jargon, but just want to make sure it's on the record about the updates to the budget that'll reflect the skate park project. Administration, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. This is designed to ensure that we have a specific budget line item for the skate park grant-funded project. As a matter of good accounting practice, and oftentimes in order to be in compliance with grant funding, it's important that we account for specific grant-funded projects in separate line items. And this is a line item or line items that will be specific to the skate park project. We will be bringing forth some additional items for other grant-funded projects in the next week or two to ensure that they also have their own separate line items. But we wanted to immediately bring this forward because the skate park project is moving forward, and we want to make sure that vendors get paid in a timely way. In terms of the specific finance questions that folks may have, I'd encourage you to direct those to our acting finance director and deputy mayor, Calphani Stevens. We also have Alex Borngesser here, our director of grants, who can answer questions about the underlying project. But Deputy Mayor Stevens, do you have anything to add?
So, thank you, Mayor.
So, thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, this is just some basic accounting work that needs to be done. What's happening is we're looking at all of the line items where the revenue came into the city. And we're moving it out of those revenue categories into categories where it can actually be spent. Because the city council did not already appropriate these funds, this is a budget amendment because you will now be appropriating the funds to actually be spent. This is truly the definition of paperwork that needs to be done. The money is already there. It's already been earmarked for this use. It's just that before we can legally do it, you need to approve the appropriation. And again, because it was not appropriated at the time of the budget, this is a budget amendment. If you have more, and as the mayor did say, you can see the extension SKATP. You will now be, it will not necessarily be letters, but you will now be seeing extensions at the end of all of our grants so that we can better report what money came in as grant money and how did that money get spent out. And so you will now see that on all of our grants. And going forward, we will have more budget amendments to create those specific sub-accounts. If you have more specific detailed questions, we do have Sekar Bawa here, who is our lead accountant, who can answer those questions. And so with that, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, first question.
Yes, good evening. What's the totality, the total amount that's located for the Skate Park grants?
Total amount is $518,224.41.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? This is a, this resolution authorizes our city clerk to post the notice of the budget amendment. As required, we are, we give eight days or whatever the period is. Is that right, Clerk Doyle? Does that sound right? Seven days, but obviously less than seven days is when our next city council meeting is. So this will be back before us two weeks from now when we're ultimately going to be deciding the budget amendment. Any further discussion? Does the administration through Director Borngesser just want to share any exciting headline-grabbing news with the progress of the Skate Park project? Obviously, there was a date deadline element to the funding that we received, and just want to make sure everything is moving forward.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. The Skate Park project is moving along swimmingly. We have awarded the contract, as you know, to Grindline. We had a community engagement event, a community engagement event here at City Hall that was very well received. Every single attendee of the event spoke and gave feedback on the preliminary design concept. Next week, we will have, which will, an email went out today to residents and will be posted online. We will have a review of that preliminary design concept on the 27th here at City Hall in this space. And we'll be able to look at the first phase of the design and give further feedback. Beyond that, we have asked for an extension from the funder, understanding that it could snow at any moment. And so pouring concrete in snowy and icy conditions is not ideal. They're amenable to this, and this will mean that we'll get as much work done as possible in this year and then pick up again next year once the snow thaws and spring is upon us. So we're very excited about this project. Everyone seems to be on board, and our contractor has been working away at this preliminary design. We're excited to see it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Yes, what's the deadline for when this Skate Park is going to actually be finished?
So the deadline is supposed to be the end of November of this year. That's our current agreement. We've asked for an extension into spring of next year. That date has not been decided. Obviously, we're at the liberty of the weather, and so we're looking at April was the date, was the timeline we suggested, but they have not given us a formal deadline to this point.
Follow-up call, I mean question, sorry. Still thinking I'm at work. So what happens if we don't get the extension? Do we lose the money at that point from the grant? I'm talking about the Tony Hawk grant, correct?
Yes, so that's actually through Ralph Wilson Jr. Foundation Built to Play. They absorbed the Tony Hawk Foundation. So at this time, we are a sub-recipient of these funds, and these funds came through Sheriff Powell, and so we'd have to work that out with them. I don't believe that to be in our future. I'm very confident. We spoke with the funder, who is also here at the community engagement event, who encouraged us to ask for an extension. So I believe that we will be in good standing and that all of this will be a matter of signing an extension addendum.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for that information. And should we anticipate that would come before city council for ratification or approval?
I believe so. I believe that that is over and above anything that city council has already ratified. But Ms. Borngesser, is that your interpretation as well?
Well, we debated this at length with another grant opportunity. I am unsure if it should come before council, and I defer to the administration and council. I'm happy to bring it either way.
Okay, understood. And we'll have those communications. I just want to say this is a great example of why it's very helpful to have a robust and professional grants and philanthropy department as the city of Pontiac. So that way, as the nuances of these very complex projects and the funding constraints work its way through the real world, that we don't lose out, we don't have to return it, we don't have to sort of squash the great project. Thank you very much for your expert navigation of the process. Hearing no further discussion, we move, speakers list has been exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. City clerk, you are hereby authorized. Please proceed. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the placement of special tax assessment for blight fines, grass cutting, and nuisance costs on the winter tax rolls? So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. Order in the chambers. That motion is now before us. Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I turn it over to Treasurer Prater, I do just want to clarify for the public, because I got a question on this this morning, that this is not a general tax assessment on residents as a whole. This is very specific to those individual residents or property owners who have fines or tickets for blight or grass cutting or other nuisances. And if they have unpaid tickets for those things, this is a specific tax assessment to that individual property owner to ensure that they pay for those nuisance costs, fines, and tickets. So I want to be very clear. This is not a general tax assessment. You will not be affected by this unless you have unpaid tickets for blight or other nuisance violations.
That is correct. So, good evening, council, mayor, and deputy mayor. I am before you to request authorization to place the blight fees, grass cutting, and nuisance fees on the 2022 winter tax bill. And just to give you a little context, I'll break down, I believe I did provide just the total amounts. I didn't want to inundate you with hundreds of pages of just parcel-level detail. But for blight for 2022, the total amount that will be placed for all parcels, which is I think 1,091 parcels that this blight fee will affect, is 267,900. Grass cutting is going to be $38,515, and nuisance fee total, $30,695. Significantly less than the prior year. So for 2021, the blight fees were $395,000 as opposed to 267. Grass cutting was $49,000 as opposed to $38,000. And then nuisance, it was $66,000 as opposed to $30,000. For a total amount for 2022 winter assessment, $337,711. For the blight range, the range for blight fees range from $100 to $500. 28% of the total amount or the total parcels is the $500. So that's about 307 parcels that will be charged $500 for blight. 604 parcels, which is about 55% of the total parcels, is charged $100 for blight. For the nuisance, it's only 11 parcels that's going to be affected. Those are significantly higher. The average for nuisance is going to be 2,790.45. The, at the high, the, I'm sorry, $950 is the minimum and $6,900 is the maximum for the blight. And again, it's only 11 parcels. And lastly, for the grass cutting, only 138 parcels are affected by that. The average is $279 that's going to be charged for grass cutting. The minimum is $235 and the max is $900.
Thank you for that. Obviously, there have been more fines and charges assessed, but thank you, Pontiac property owners, who already paid up. These are the folks that did wrong by their neighbors and the city requirements and also have done wrong by not paying the bill. So with that, Councilman Nicholson, followed by Councilwoman Rutherford, and then Councilwoman James.
The way our packets come over, the full report is in PDF, so it actually splits up that portrait document. I wonder if you, is there any way to export this to Excel so we can sort in total some of our personal?
Yes, it can be exported into Excel, and all of the reporting is available in the treasurer's office. And it's totality, but I always like to just to give a snapshot of the total amount of each special assessment that I'm coming before you requesting authorization to place on the roll for.
Perfect, yeah. So we did see that data, and we're able to, but I think to Councilman Nicholson's point, it'll be helpful for us almost do some research about what is that subtotal for each of our districts.
It's hard for us to really tell as it lines up because the first half of it is the addresses with the parcel IDs, and then the other half is then the corresponding complaint with the fee. So without counting page to page, electronic, especially Excel, something that we can.
Okay, all right.
Just share that with Legislative Council Sharp, and she can take it from there.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yes, has there been a change in the rates of the fines from 2021 to 2022?
Unfortunately, code enforcement's manager was not able to be here this evening. He will be able to speak more towards, you know, the total amount of what they charge for the fines. I'm not really 100% aware of, you know, their process and how much they charge and, you know, the increase in charge if they don't pay. But I don't know if administration can speak to it for that question.
I do believe that when we did the fee schedule this year, that we did make changes to some of those. Specifically, though, the fine amounts, the $100, the $500, those were not changed.
And the bulk of these are covering sort of like 2021, you know, earlier 2022. So that might not have, if there was any fine changes, that there sort of would be a lag before we would see it manifest in the totals. But yeah, so the city council can set fines and therefore change fines as we see appropriate moving forward. Legislative Council Sharp, anything further you want?
I was going to piggyback off what the deputy mayor said. I just didn't recall council making those changes as it relates to the grass cutting. Because again, as the president said, you make those changes during the budget. So if you guys decide going forward that you want to increase them, then when you do your budget, your next budget, then that's the time for you to make those changes.
Well, I was.
On follow-up, yes, ma'am.
I was mainly looking at it from the perspective that this year was lower. The totals were lower than last year, if I understood you correctly.
That's correct.
And I just, so I was just making note of that, that, you know, if we had seen a change in the monies that were being charged.
Deputy Mayor, we welcome analysis moving forward that the city council can review to see what factors might have played into that. And I know that we might actually, when we do this this time next year, we might have even a lower amount because, as has been discussed at the subcommittee level, there's an interest in pursuing these fines and assessments through the district court as the law in the court subcommittee has reported out to us. So that would mean less placed on the winter tax rolls, and it would be more collected through the district court process.
Well, lower is better, you know, lower because it shows that residents are stepping up and getting these things paid before they have to hit the tax rolls. So I think that's good to see less this year than it was last year. I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
The goal is a blight-free neighborhood, yes. So that's the ultimate desire. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Yes, I have a question. Are we allowing people to set up payment plans for these, once it's on their taxes so that they don't lose their property over $235? Currently, treasury does not offer payment plans. Citizens are encouraged to come in and pay as often as they, you know, as their budget, you know, would allow them to. But we currently don't have a option to set payment plans for taxes or special assessments at this time.
And if, however, and Mayor Grimaldi might speak to this in terms of after a year passes, then it's in the county treasurer's hands, and they do have payment plan options.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say. You know, obviously, they had quite a bit of time to pay these blight tickets before it even goes on the tax rolls. But more importantly, the only time a person loses their property is if their taxes go unpaid for three years, and then they would go through the tax foreclosure process. Although we don't arrange payment plans, the county treasurer does. And so if they're at risk of tax foreclosure, the county treasurer routinely enters into payment plans with residents. Now, there are fees and interest that residents need to consider when entering into some of those payment plans, and they should make sure to get all that information upfront from the county treasurer's office. But in terms of whether they'd be at risk of losing their property through the tax foreclosure process, they would have an opportunity through the county treasurer's office to enter into a payment plan before that happens.
On follow-up, Councilwoman Rutherford.
He just answered the question. Thank you so much, sir.
Councilman Nicholson.
I want to underline, though, just as Treasurer Prater said, that people can come in and make payments toward their balance. And the balance isn't increasing with interest by day or by month, right, until when it's assessed? It's assessed for that tax year, correct?
So, so the way it works is property, January, I'm sorry, summer taxes are due by the end of August. September 1, there is a 1%. So all about the total balance that goes unpaid, there is a 1% fee added. And then the following month is a 2%, and the following month is a 3%. So there is an interest that is accrued unpaid.
But it would take until the next tax year to start accruing those interests. It would start in the following taxable period, not in the current taxable period.
It starts currently. So if you're assessed.
So 1% each month?
Yeah, 1% each month. If you're assessed in July and you don't pay it as of September 1st, you incur, you incur a 1% interest fee September 1.
Is that interest rate set by us? By whom?
That interest rate, I believe, is set by city charter.
That's right. There was a charter amendment adopted by the voters, I want to say, six years ago. Because when I was on the old charter revision commission, we were, it originally was your deadline for the summer taxes was July 31st. And we thought it was appropriate to expand that window. And when we expanded that to make the deadline August 31st, then it also would correspondingly push back by about 31 days when that interest penalty starts. So even though that ultimate charter revision wasn't adopted, it was one of the individual recommendations that then the previous city clerk and the city council put before the voters to individually adopt. That change was made, and that also created a longer window for the winter tax bill to be paid without penalty. So do you want to share for, because that's what we're talking about, the winter 22 tax bills, when residents and taxpayers should expect those to arrive and what period of time they have to pay that without penalty?
Thank you.
So winter tax bills should be received by December 1. You have, citizens have until February, they have until February 28th to pay them. However, interest accrues as of March, I'm sorry. It's due in December, January, February, as of February 1. There is an additional interest accrued.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
And how are we telling the citizens about the interest being included? Is it put in a letter? Is it sent out emails? Because what I don't want to happen is that someone tries to say, well, I didn't know about the interest being incurred, and then it becomes a bigger issue. So I'm trying to minimize the misinformation.
I believe it's stated on the tax bill, once it goes out, the interest schedule. And again, these property tax assessments have been, you know, this is the same assessment that goes out, you know, year after year, twice a year for summer and winter. And it is the same, you know, pay schedule or the same verbiage that's on the tax bill. So I believe that majority of the homeowners are aware of, you know, the payment schedule. But for the small percentage that is not aware, it is included on the property tax bill in terms of when interest is accrued.
Yeah, so when the tax bill comes due, it's in even a different color font, I think, to try and get people's attention.
But just to make it clear, can't we use the same thing that we used, put it online and make it sure people see it? Like on the TV, how we show city council every week, can we put something up saying, here's a friendly reminder, this needs to be paid? I just want it to be so that people can't use an excuse, say, well, I didn't know. So can we use that, Mayor Grimaldi?
I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to share sort of helpful heads up for residents when it comes to taxation, when it comes to services, when lawn bags can't be picked up anymore. I think there's a lot that, and I. I think there's a lot that, and I know that's why we've created the communications director position, last week, we hired that position, they start November 1st. I think there's going to be a lot of room for growth there, using all the tools in the communication toolbox. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, anything finally you want to share on that?
Well, that, that's right, and, you know, it is important to note that this information about when interest accrues, when taxes are due, is all on the tax bill, but there's no harm in reminding people of that, and we want to, I think doing so not only ensures that residents know what to expect, but even more importantly, helps encourage residents to pay taxes on time and to avoid those, those late penalties or interest. And we have a lot of information that we need to look for better opportunities to share with residents, so this is certainly one example of that, but there are lots of others. And once our new director of communication starts on November 1st, we'll be making sure that they're on top of things, doing a better job getting those pieces of information out to residents.
Thank you so much.
A final question I want to pick up on, so let's say they get their tax bill December 1st at one of our neighbors, and they come in and they pay, one week they pay $50, the next week they pay $20. They could ultimately chip away at it before the, the fine period begins February 1st. They don't have to come in and pay their whole balance in one go, is that correct?
That's correct.
So to the point that was being discussed, neighbors don't be intimidated if you don't have the full price tag. That's a bigger concern in the summer because the, that's when the bigger part of our taxes come. Winners are a smaller portion, but in this instance, for some, they might have a, a higher-than-usual winter bill because they had nuisance blight or grass that wasn't addressed, the city addressed it, and now they're being charged for it and they haven't paid it yet. Pro Tem Carrington?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we understand that this is not our everyday neighbor. These are landowners, I mean landlords, that own multiple homes. There are citizens that, that own multiple homes. There are businesses, there are also out-of, out-of-state businesses, and also multinational corporation businesses. So I just want to make sure we don't think that this is affecting most of everyday citizens like us, our next-door neighbors. This is some, this is someone that owns multiple homes that are not keeping up their properties. So I just want to make sure that we understand that as a community.
Great point. We did start doing some public engagement or education on taxation in general. Any further discussion? Councilman Goodman?
I mean, just to follow up with Council Pro Tem's point, I think it's just, it's important to know that when we're having this discussion, that we're talking about not the average citizen who owns their, their singular home. Like, if you look through this, many of these people own multiple plots of land, they're an LLC that owns plots of lands. So making sure that we, when we're having this discussion, we're not just discussing it as if we're trying to throw a $300 fee on your average Pontiac resident. Like, there is a purpose for why we're holding people accountable for the, the fines and fees that they owe.
Yeah, and I will add to that, you know, if you have a next-door neighbor whose grass is just growing and they're not cutting it, you know, that's NISOR, and so the city is coming in and taking care of that for, you know, the community and for the, the neighbors, and we are now charging or holding that homeowner accountable. So that, that's, this is what, you know, what that is, this isn't, you know, your normal renter or homeowner that is doing what they're supposed to do, and they're just being taxed for something, or being, you know, a special assessment being added for something that they didn't do, or they're having to pay for someone else's. You know, this is directly a homeowner who is in violation of code enforcement's, you know, laws.
Hearing no, oh, Deputy Mayor Steve?
So just the last thing to add is that we're doing this now for the winter bills, and so this includes, you know, activities that have happened up to date, and now we will start compiling the same list again, and you will have this same type of activity for the summer bills that will go out, and you will have this on a recurring basis for each bill, so that we are not allowing these to just age and age and age before we put them on the tax bills.
Well put. Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted, roll call and adoption of the resolution authorizing the placement of a special tax assessment for blight fines, grass cutting, and nuisance costs on the winter tax rolls. Clerk Doyle?
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and school district for after-school youth recreation activities in Pontiac's elementary schools?
Moved by Carrington.
Supported by Rutherford.
It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. There's still some final negotiating going on in terms of the details of the memorandum of understanding, so we won't be voting on this tonight, but we wanted to, since it was in the public domain, wanted to give a little bit of context before we postpone for one week. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is, I think, a really exciting beginning to what I hope will be a, a long-term partnership between the city and the school district. The proposal is pretty straightforward, that this would be an agreement between the two entities. It would involve the city utilizing all of the elementary schools that are part of the Pontiac School District for some after-school programming. Specifically, this, this fall, the remainder of this calendar year, it would involve girls' basketball practice as well as dance programs, and it would involve ultimately those practices at the elementary schools culminating in games between teams associated with each elementary school at the United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex. And we haven't yet finalized proposed programming for the coming calendar year, beginning in January. We will probably also be offering basketball then, boys' basketball, but perhaps also some other programming as well. So stay tuned for some of those details. We are very close, I think, to finalizing this agreement, but the school district had some proposed modifications that they brought to us yesterday afternoon. The city's attorney reviewed those and provided some comments this afternoon in response to those, but I think we'll have something finalized this week to bring before council next week.
And, and just to confirm, so this is using the youth recreation millage dollars, and those would essentially be additional satellite youth recreation sites in partnership between the city and the school district?
Exactly.
And is it all of the elementaries or some?
It is.
All of the elementary schools.
Very cool. All right, hearing no further discussion, can I please have a motion to postpone for one week?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, to postpone for one week. Hearing no discussion on postponement, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. This item has been postponed for one week, it'll be before us again at the next regular city council meeting. We are now at public comment. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests tonight?
Yes, several.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Deputy Mayor. My name's Karen Jorgensen, and I want to thank you first of all for moving the public comment a little earlier in your meetings, because I haven't been able to make them later. I'm real excited that Pontiac Little Art Theater is up and running. We had a little hiatus, we were waiting for our liquor license, which fortunately we received about a month and a half ago, and I have an awesome new team. We are, did a soft opening a couple of weeks ago with our cafe, 9 through to 3:00 PM, Monday through Fridays, and so we offer a really great place to have some food, and if you need to have a separate meeting, we have a meeting space that we would love to share with the public. We have a huge lineup of entertainment. The first thing that's happening is Oakland University. We've been very fortunate to solidify a stronger relationship with them. So on October 28th at 7:30, we will have the Super Marimba Concert, and that will be led by Dr. Mark Stone. The next night is Saturday, the Halloween Saturday, and we're going to have scary 1920s, 30s black and white movies, and that will start at about 7:00, and last till about 11:00 at night. Many of you know Irma Hayes, who did a wonderful lawn chair concert tour this summer. She is bringing to us Jokes on You with five comedians, and one of the headliners will be Mike Cheater, who I know that many of you saw at one of the lawn chair events. That will be Wednesday, November 2nd at 7:30. Oh, I'm running out of time. Big headliner, Alexander Zoncheck is coming back to our place. This will be his fourth concert with James Lloyd, that will be Saturday, November 12th. Doors open at 6:30. If you want tickets, call me at 248-644-2110. Boblo Boats, A Detroit Fairy Tale, we will be having that movie at our place, November 18th and 20th. We'll have Q and A with the film producer. Oakland University has a jazz concert on Tuesday, the 22nd of November. Matt Morrow will be performing on December 9th. Quincy Jones and Dominique Phillips will both be performing jazz on December 30th. We'll have jam nights on Tuesday nights, and we will have, we have a coalition with Friends of Maine Art Theater, so we'll be doing movies on Thursday evenings starting in November. So hope to see all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Deserou? I'm assuming, your name wrote on here twice. It's Pastor Kathy at the bottom, and then your full name at the top.
Well, I thought I was going to be late, so I had asked to have my name put on. I usually try to be positive when I have the mic, but I do have some complaints tonight. Contact is a very important issue with the city, and I have now experienced it myself, so I understand what everybody's complaining about. When you try to get a hold of someone in different departments in this city, it's a nightmare. They don't return calls. I gave up, I came in, we got the situation handled. It took a while, but we got it handled, thanks to Donovan's persistence in working at it. But while I was there, there were two other people who have now been a year trying to have their businesses contacted back through the planning department. Ours was, the planning department lost a check we had paid as a church, and when we were ready to do something that we needed, the result of paying that check, we didn't have it, and they don't know where the check went. We've reissued the check, but that can't happen, and those are the kinds of things the general public complain about. And so now that I too have had to experience it, I'm bringing it to you because you need to know that it's a problem. And I like the new phone system, but good grief, three different numbers to get to one department? That's a lot of listening to, if you need so-and-so, press 1. If you need so-and-so, and then you get to so-and-so, and then it's, if you need such-and-such, go to, it's a lot. And the people in the community in general are not going to hang on that long. You know, I didn't. I got in the car and came down, I got tired of the whole situation. I had to let the phone ring 27 times to get it answered. Unacceptable. Number two, while we're talking about new lights and lights on roads that need lighting, the Walton situation between Perry and Giddings is getting to be treacherous. We have five driveways within a quarter of a mile from multiple dwelling or grocery store-type places, and people are getting hit all the time. You know, okay, they're fender benders, somebody's going to get seriously hurt there. It's a real bad situation, and it needs to be looked at, if you would please. And then, there's a lot of bad rumors on the propositions, I've talked to Councilman Goodman tonight about one of the situations. Don't listen to the rumors, read the proposals for yourself. They're out there, you can read them. Take the time before you vote to know what you're voting for. Just because you've got that much on your ballot, there is that much that needs to be read. Read it all, or don't complain. And finally...
That does conclude your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Florence Anthony Atifia?
Not all yea, yes, all the t... I'm Florence Atifia, and I own property in Pontiac, and something told me that something was wrong, so I went to City Hall to the treasurer's office to see about my property tax, and found out that I owe six pennies, six cents, on my property tax. Now, I, I worked as a consultant for H&R Block and had my own business, tax business, so I kind of know a little bit about paying my taxes and being able to add, and also, they said that I owed $3.35 on my winter tax. I said, "Winter tax?" They had me saying, "Yes, you owe..." I said, "Winter tax isn't even here yet, so how can I owe something that hasn't happened? And how can I owe six cents on my property?" You know, my home can be taken away in three years for six pennies. What I'm asking for is an audit on my taxes, property taxes. I'd like to know who I contact for an audit. I will not lose my home for six pennies, and I don't think anybody else would want that, too. Nobody tells you how much you owe until they foreclose. Can you imagine how angry a person could get when it, they say, "Well, you owed six pennies, so we're going to take your home." I'm serious. Who do I go to for an audit of my property tax? I did go to the income tax office, and the man there was very, very good. He told me that I didn't owe anything, and, and we had a good conversation, but the treasurer, property tax, pretended that she didn't even know who the treasurer was, that the treasurer wasn't there that day. And then when I kept looking for the treasurer in the building, someone said, "That's the treasurer." And so I went back, and I said, "Well, you're the treasurer." I said, "If you didn't do it, you're going to be blamed, because people will be angry if they find that their home is taken for six pennies. Thank you, and some of you need to think, if you get something from city council and it's unreadable, so that you don't know what's happening and don't know what questions to ask, then they say I'm crazy, they pretend I'm crazy, I think you're crazy if you accept." That's why you all just sit there and say, "Yea, yea," and you let Hitman...
That does conclude your time.
McGinnis, yeah, I'm saying it, run the meeting, don't you know that he talked through the whole meeting with the contractors? It was back and forth, and it ended with cutting grass and blaming the citizens of Pontiac because they don't cut their grass, and taxes...
More residents are waiting for their, a lot of time.
That's what you did when I addressed the Board of Education, too, that's what you do. You just talk, 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 make all the decisions that, you know...
Who's next on the speakers list, Pro Tem Carrington?
Ms. Tamika Ramsey.
And only one person mentioned, I mean, come on, DePaul.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
Yes, I'm out of order, I'm going to stay out of order because I'm going to school board meetings now.
Ma'am, we can have you, we can have you removed, ma'am.
There is another resident who deserves their...
Ma'am, we don't want to, we don't want to have to have you removed, ma'am.
Well, you could have had me removed. I've been removed before, when I was with the Board of Education.
Tamika Ramsey, Tamika Ramsey's time to speak.
Thank you.
Tamika's, Tamika Ramsey's time has started.
Okay.
Tamika Ramsey?
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to thank all of you for your condolences in reaching out to me on the death of my mother. It was very unexpected, I was able to be with her in her last minutes, and it was really hard. I appreciate everything that all of you did. I... I was, you know, I have so many friends here, and people who care about my entire family. And so, I just wanted to publicly say thank you to everybody who was able to be there for me, opening the Bowen Center. P's and Q's made two beautiful cakes. The council for calling the mayor and the deputy mayor for checking in on me, and I just appreciated, and so did my entire family. So I just wanted to come and say thank you, because I have not been here since that event has taken place. I am also here to talk about, there will be a comedy show this Friday at the Strand Theater. My national organization, the National Coalition on Black Civic Participation, is coming into Michigan. They have been in Ohio, Florida, Georgia. They're coming to Michigan, and then after they leave Michigan, they're going to Pennsylvania to thank the amazing people who are on the ground fighting for democracy every single day. This event is 100% free to the community. Soul Rose will be there. It will be free food. There will be free valet parking. The only thing that will not be free will be the drinks. The comedy reception starts at 6 o'clock until 7:00. The comedy show starts at 7:15. And so, I would like to welcome any and everybody to come and participate. We work really, really hard to defend democracy in this country. People have lost their lives in the past. People have lost their lives currently, defending and fighting for democracy, making sure that every person has a right to vote and that their vote counts. There are some amazing things on the ballot that will be coming up, and so we just want to lift those things up. And so, I just wanted to invite everyone. I do have some flyers. I will make sure the council gets them, and then I will make sure that the rest can go to the crowd. And once again, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your thoughts and prayers, and your support in the loss of my mother. Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Mosso-Sparring, and is it Kelly Porter?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is Kelly. I'm Melissa. We're with Ottawa Park and Oak Hill Cemetery. I've been here for a few weeks, haven't really come up and say hello, but this week, I thought I'd bring Kelly. Kelly is one of our counselors at Ottawa Park and Oak Hill, and she really wants to start meeting the Pontiac citizens. She'd really like to get involved, and we've been actually over at the Bowen Center together a couple of weeks ago for, I can't remember the name very well, is it Golden Opportunities or Golden...
Yes, Golden Opportunity is correct.
Yes. So we had a great time over there.
Messing people.
Yes, and so I brought Kelly. So Kelly, this is the council deputy mayor and the mayor. Did you have something you'd like to say?
Well, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I'd invite you to call our office, make an appointment, and come in for a free planner or whatever you'd like to discuss. We can definitely help everyone with any budget that they may have. Yeah, thank you.
On to that, I'd also like to say that we will be having our annual tree lighting this year in December. We invite everybody who's lost a loved one to come on over to Ottawa Park. Into the chapel, we have an eight-foot tree. You're welcome to bring an ornament for your loved one that has passed. We typically have a couple of funeral homes that sponsor us for it, and we typically have coffee and refreshments, and it's a really nice way to start off the holiday season, especially when people have lost somebody. So I'd like to put it out there that we will be having that, and as soon as I have more information, I will definitely get it for you, the council and the public, so everybody can add it to their schedule. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
I stayed to just finish the comments. I didn't get a chance to finish during the two minutes of agenda address, but while listening to some of the other public comments, it just reminded me with some of the things going on in the Finance and Treasury Department, what's the status of our Finance Department right now? I understand we still don't have a Finance Director, and I know Deputy Mayor Kilfani Stevens has been assigned to be acting, but he's not a CPA. And also, we don't have any accounting firm. Where are our accountants? When I talked to a couple of the people who are in Finance, they say they're hanging on by their fingernails, just trying to run a department, which is very important for the city. So I'm just trying to see what the status is of that, in addition to the fact that the cracks are showing. I mean, there was a few weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, the city missed a payroll for their employees. I have never, since I've lived in Pontiac, heard that you ever missed a payroll for city employees. As a businessperson, you know, one thing you do is you pay your employees. I've been a businessperson for 32 years, and you pay your employees, because people have debts, they have mortgages to pay. You don't ever miss a payroll, so that just means that we need to do something about getting that Finance Department back on track. But, what I really wanted to just finish, I was talking to council about some of the things that will be coming before you, that we want to make sure they get their full consideration. One of those things, and a couple of the people keep asking about me, is the ARP money. It's been in the treasury since over a year now, and it's brought here, $38 million, for citizen and business COVID-19 relief. One of the things we hear is that, I heard you say, I think Pastor Parker, that people, as they're getting code enforcement violations, they want to know if there's any help. No, I think it was you, Councilman Carrington, who said, "Is there any help for people who need help with some of these improvements they need?" And people need the money now. This is the time to fix your roofs. This is the time to fix your steps, right here. So I hope you're going to come up with a plan that meets the needs of the citizens. That's what we fought for the money for, and we hope that we'll put into place. There was federal money that came during my administration, second administration. It was called the CARES Act, and there was, I think it was 5.6 million. And the city council and I agreed that that should be used for the mortgage consortium to help people who had fallen behind in their mortgages or in their rent, so they wouldn't be evicted and they wouldn't lose their homes. That was a good use of the money, and I hope we have those same kinds of programs that you will consider and get going. The other thing that's coming before you is the recreational marijuana that I hear that, I understand the mayor is writing up a proposal for you to consider. So, one of the things that's wrong with the current medical marijuana is that it puts facilities in neighborhoods. That's the one thing the citizen says they don't want. We want to make sure you close that loophole. The one that the Planning Commission just gave a special exemption permit is three doors from a child daycare facility. That should not happen. So we want to make sure that you don't, just rubber stamp that, that you look at that and make sure that gets corrected.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. My comments this evening should land directly in or around each of the council people. For an example, the tree on West Pike Street in State, that tree is going to cause somebody havoc. It's going to fall, it's very, very rotten. So if that's in your area, please have a look at it. The open hole on Osmond and Sanford Streets, been like that since last summer. The person who took the building down left the hole, and the city has not done anything to satisfy that problem. That should have been taken care of quite a while ago. We have ordinance in the city for sign posting, putting signs in the right-of-way, and on the telephone poles, and the trees and stuff. We would need to get away from that syndrome. These folk that come into town in the middle of the night and post their signs in our right-of-way, and on the poles, and so on and so forth, we have enough people now, I'm hopeful, that go around with our trucks, pull those signs up, and put them in your truck and dispose of them. They do not need to be in our right-of-way or in our landscape around the city. I've been concerned about the junk cars and the trailers on Mechanic Street. All summer, all winter, last year and this year, we had 15 inches of snow up north. Supposing that 15 inches of snow would have fell in Pontiac, we would not have been able to plow the streets properly because of junk cars, junk trailers, et cetera, you name it. On any and every street in this city, there's a junk piece of car that should be removed. Now, if the Sheriff Department don't remove it, I know somebody who can. And if I have to call them in here, I'll do it, and I'll acknowledge the mayor on it before I do do it. State police will come in here and do it. Now, junk cars, Mechanic Street, okay, so I got that covered. There was at one time, Mayor, a million dollars, I assume that it was a million dollars, that was posted for demolition of the Phoenix Plaza. But I don't know if that million dollars is still somewhere in the coffers, or still being set aside for a purpose of demolition or whatever, but I'm hopeful that if it is, maybe we could take that million, if it's available, and utilize that to help get rid of the blight on Sanford, that old Purdue school. That might be a good start to use that million dollars. So if that's available, let's put it in that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Span.
Good evening to the mayor and to the deputy mayor and the council. I'm just coming before you to publicly thank the mayor for coming to our meeting that we had November 10th, and also the city clerk. Most people didn't even know who the city clerk was, and they were very surprised, and they asked him some really good questions, and the mayor helped us tremendously answering about the voting and resolutions that are coming on the ballot this coming November. But again, I want to thank both of you for taking the time and effort to come to the citizens of Pontiac, and that's the Hispanic community, too. They showed up also. So I want to say publicly, thank you so very much for helping us out on that particular day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark. That's, she's the last speaker for public comment, President McGinnis.
Good afternoon. I'm Darlene, speaking as a resident of District One. District One community have a little concern, or maybe confused about a situation that's been brought to their attention. According to District One representative, we have a total of maybe $40,000 to $41,000 in our district, and which $6,000 of, a little over $6,000 has been spent. In talking to our councilperson, it was brought to their attention that she got the approval from Mike McGinnis. The citizen District One is under understanding that when money has been spent under $10,000, there is no need to bring it to council for approval. So could you please vocally, whilst the people are listening, explain to them that the procedure in order to get money for funds? They feel that the money that's being spent is not being appropriately spent, but the excuse, and I heard both sides says that, Mike McGinnis gave the approval. Could you please clear that up tonight on your speaks for the District One people?
All right, that concludes public comment. We are now at City Council Communications. The Pontiac City Council has recognized October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Many Pontiac residents, and as well as 70 million Americans, will see an 8.7% increase in their Social Security benefits and supplemental security income SSI payments in 2023. Social Security benefits will increase by more, by the average of more than $140 per month, starting this coming January. Wanted to make sure that Pontiac residents that will be impacted know about that big, big change. The Pontiac School District is hiring for multiple full-time positions for bus drivers, police authority officers, and building substitute teachers, and part-time positions of building helpers. You can find more details on the city council's agenda under City Council Communications. Oakland County and Pontiac Community Foundation is now accepting grant applications for a Healthy Food Access Grant Program. Those eligible can apply up to $50,000 to provide food for Oakland County residents struggling to feed families. Thankful Heart still continues their annual collection drive for coats and toys. You can contact Ruth Montague at 248-563-3191. Oakland County African American Male Task Force screening of Black Boys Documentary, October 20th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m., held at Oakland Schools 2111 Pontiac Lake Road in Waterford. Pontiac High School Boys Varsity Football Game versus Garden City, October 21st, 7:00 p.m., held at Pontiac High School's Stadium, 1051 Arlene Avenue in Pontiac. Yak Town Don't Back Down and Native Kings has their Halloween event at Murphy Park, October 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Murphy Park is on MLK Boulevard on Pontiac's east side. So that's Pontiac Kids' Party, featuring music, costume contest, and games. Oakland County Sheriff's Office and Deputies for Kids presents their 11th Annual Angels' Night and Trunk or Treat, in partnership with the school district and the city and many other community groups. That's October 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., held at Aaron Perry Park, 345 Edison in Pontiac. Elf Magic fundraiser for the Holiday Extravaganza Parade, October 27th, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., held at the Shark Club on Highland Road in Waterford. Their website is holidayextravaganza.org. The Super Marimba Concert is October 28th at 7:30 p.m. at Pontiac Soul Art Theater, 47 North Saginaw Street in downtown Pontiac. Free admission for that concert. The Oakland County Treasurer Virtual Land Auction Final Round is October 28th, and that's online at tax-sale.info. That's the website, tax-sale.info. Oakland University Pontiac Initiative Town Hall Meeting is October 29th at Oakland University's Oakland Center, and that's happening October 29th in the morning. Registration deadline is October 20th. Pontiac Creative Arts Center has a community drum circle, free admission, October 29th at 11:00 a.m. The Creative Arts Center is at 47 William Street in Pontiac. The Farmer's Market has their Healthy Halloween at the Oakland History Center's Harvest Festival, October 30th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The History Center is at 405 Caesar Chavez Avenue in Pontiac. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford presents Trick or Treat for District One, October 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., held at 456 Alton Street in Pontiac. Eat Community Outreach Services Trunk or Treat, October 30th, from 5:00 to 8:00, held at UWM Sports Complex on South Boulevard in Pontiac. And I'll just round out the rest of the stuff before our next meeting. The Oakland County Water Resources Commission, their Water Residential Assistance Program, or their RAP program, has resources available for Pontiac residents to assist them with paying water bills. You can visit waynmentro.org/RAP, or call 248-983-5656. Again, 248-983-5656 for more information. Pontiac Knight Riders Motorcycle Club has their free annual Kitty Spooky Party, October 31st, 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 339 Rayburn in Pontiac. And the Fran Anderson Making a Difference Scholarship Essay Competition Deadline is November 1st at 12:00 p.m. Pontiac students can earn a $1,000 scholarship, and you can find out more at holidayextravaganza.org. More information about upcoming events can be seen on the city council agenda, which is posted on the city's website and accessible for all, for those that aren't with us in person. With that, we now move to the mayor's office communication. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. A couple of communications. First of all, again, I know I've brought this up a number of times, and we'll continue to get the word out. We've got really great youth recreation and youth enrichment programming this fall. It is not too late to sign up, so if you've got kids, grandkids, neighbors' kids, friends' kids, please encourage them to enroll in our Pontiac Youth Recreation and Enrichment Programming this fall. They can do so online at pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. In addition, we have also, through our Youth Recreation and Enrichment Program, a really great, exciting Harvest Festival coming up the weekend, what I'll call the Weekend of Halloween, even though Halloween, I think, falls on a Monday this year. But the immediate, immediately preceding Saturday, October 29th, right here on the front lawn of City Hall, will be a really fun Pontiac Harvest Festival, community and family fun event. That will be here at City Hall, again, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 29th. We hope to see a lot of folks there.
With that, your closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Thank you again, President McGinnis. First of all, I wanted just to correct some misinformation that was, again, shared tonight. A member of the public talked about the fact that we don't currently have a full-time, permanent Finance Director. That much is true. What she omitted to share is that that's because the forensic audit found that the previous former... previous former finance director, who's no longer with us, uh, abetted improper spending here at City Hall in collaboration with the previous mayor, uh, and that's why we terminated his employment. Uh, we are actively searching for a new finance director, and have interviewed some great candidates. We have one more candidate to interview, and then I expect us to bring a recommendation before council. In addition, in addition, we, uh, do have a new accounting firm, uh, and the new accounting firm has been doing a great job. We don't have the previous accounting firm that the previous mayor retained, and that's for good reason. Uh, obviously, a lot of improper spending occurred here at City Hall during that previous accounting firm's tenure. Uh, the new accounting firm is cleaning up, uh, a lot of the mess that the previous mayor left in her wake. Third, and lastly, uh, it's true that payroll was slightly delayed by a portion of a day, uh, but that was entirely the fault of the payroll company that the city was using at the time. That is a payroll company that was a vestige and holdover from the previous mayor's administration. Uh, everybody did get paid. Uh, the previously used payroll company acknowledged that it was their fault, and in fact, has fully compensated any employees who incurred any, any late fees or overdraft fees because they acknowledged that it was entirely their fault. And as a result, we are now using a new and much more, uh, well-respected payroll company. That, this has all previously been publicly discussed at a city council meeting a couple months back, so it's old news. But the point is, as we've had to do with a number of holdover, uh, problems from the previous administration, we've been cleaning up those messes, making sure that we have uh, a better, more effective accounting firm on the job, making sure we have a better payroll company on the job, and making sure that we're doing our due diligence in searching for and ultimately hiring a finance director who has the integrity and competence to do the job. Lastly, uh, and perhaps even more importantly, I will note that we do have a public event coming up on November second. This is a public safety town hall. I mentioned it last week, uh, but want to again mention it to remind folks that this is an opportunity on November second to come out and ask all kinds of public safety questions. That can include violent street crime, it can include accountability for the Sheriff's Department. We welcome any and all questions. There will be, uh, five people involved, there'll be, uh, I'll be there, of course, as, as mayor, but we'll have Sheriff Bouchard himself there, we'll have Sheriff Captain Ewing present, we'll have Angela Powell there in her capacity as the Chair of the Sheriff's Relations Team, and we will have either Cano Phillips, the Chair of the Anti-Violence Commission, or someone there representing the Anti-Violence Commission. And we'll certainly provide updates about all of, uh, these endeavors, including the status of rolling out body cameras on deputies here in the city. Uh, but we welcome any and all questions, and in fact, I encourage people to come out and ask Sheriff Bouchard and Captain Ewing any questions that you have about the Sheriff's Department, its operations, and about holding the Sheriff's Department accountable. Bowen Center, November second, from six to eight P M. So again, it's on November second, from six to eight P M, at the Bowen Center. Please come on out.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle, your closing comments.
Thank you, um, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Um, just once again, encouraging everybody to vote. Um, we have an election on November eighth. You can vote anytime between now and November eighth by absentee ballot, if you don't want to wait until election day to go to your polling location. The clerk's office is open Monday through Friday from eight thirty A M until four thirty P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, District One?
Good evening. It doesn't matter how strong your opinions are, if you don't use your voice for positive change, you are indeed a part of the problem. That was said by Coretta Scott King. There's so many things to celebrate in the city of Pontiac. Just last week, I had the opportunity to watch the Pontiac farmer market have a breast cancer awareness event. I say that because we have to keep looking at what's bright and what's light and what's going on in the district. I also want to correct some things that were said earlier today. Um, when we first got into, um, office, we had twenty thousand dollars that was carried over, which was voted by the council into this budget, so we had a totality of forty thousand dollars. In District One, the amount that has been spent on District One projects, that means projects that are based in District One, was six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. The process goes like this. You fill out a District One worksheet. When you fill out the worksheet, I then take it to Mr., excuse me, President McGinnis, and I ask him, does it fit in the, does it fit in the guidelines for District One projects? And then it comes back to me. But ultimately, each district decides what they can have in their districts. For example, there are murals in District Four. She submitted a paper for it, she got the prices for it, and then it was paid for. There is a mural in District One that was done by a fundraiser. I say that to say, anyone who has a District One project, all you have to do is submit to the worksheet, and as long as it fits within the guidelines, and I think it's best for the whole District One, I will fully support it. I hope that answers your question. Lastly, we have two things that are very important to me. I have, he announced it earlier about the District One, um, trunk or treat event, which is October the thirtieth, between four and six, but I also have a hundred coats for a hundred kids, which I'll be doing on November the twentieth, and on November the nineteenth, I'll be having a District One Fellowship, um, Thanksgiving dinner located at the Bowen Center. That will be the meeting for November. Lastly, I almost said this, is October the twenty-ninth, between eleven to one, I have my District One meeting where I have it every month at the Alley Cat, but next month, the meeting will be switched to the Bowen Center so that we can have a District One Fellowship. I hope that everyone from District One who understands my voice comes and enjoys it. And at the end of the day, I wish you love, peace, and soul. Have a great evening.
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District Two, looking tan, welcome.
Thanks, uh, first time away in three years. Want to say thank you to the Water Resource Commission for wrapping up the project over off of Liberty Street. Uh, have driven through a few times as Paymar has been wrapping up their, their paving, and it is, uh, it, it's remarkable, um, right? We have new sidewalks, new streets, new, uh, fire hydrants, new high-pressure lines, new water line, clean water lines. Um, you know, this is a, an area town that needed some love, and, and it got it, and Jim Nash and his team really, um, took good care. It's not an easy thing, if you've ever had your entire neighborhood completely, the infrastructure ripped out and replaced, um, all at the same time. Uh, I had calls, I had very minimal calls, actually, uh, saying, hey, this is just impassable, but it was, it was a rough time for a little while, and now it is beautiful. Um, to the residents that live in that neighborhood, it is time to start cutting your grass again. Um, so, hi, we kept it off as long as we could, um, with those curbs being replaced, we understood it was hard to get in there and in and around with weed whips and such, but it is done now, so please do get back to, um, that hard work of being a homeowner. We appreciate your hard work, um, and, um, I do have a couple of Pride and Beautification signs left that I will, um, roguely put out, um, for the, for those that take good care of, um, getting back to the status quo. Want to, uh, let, uh, residents in Seminole Hills and Ottawa Hills know that the annual Halloween Decorating Contest, um, has begun. If you drive through the historic district over off of Huron, Norchard Lake, you'll find many of the houses have done up, um, their front lawns, uh, and the judging will take place on October twenty-ninth, from six to nine P M. Uh, if you are interested in being part of the judging panel, please contact the Seminole Hills Historic District Facebook page, um, and I'm sure they will, um, be happy to have that help. They're also looking for, um, some helpers to distribute some of the cards, um, letting residents know that this is going on, but as you drive through, you'll start to see many of those have already gone up, and they are really fantastic. Um, want to also then round it out and let everyone know, Monday is our District Two Advisory Council meeting, uh, that is, um, every fourth Monday, Goldner Walsh, uh, happens at seven P M, uh, so that date is the twenty-fourth, and we'll be there with many speakers on the list. Um, thank you to Smart, um, for coming last, uh, month and giving us an update on all things, uh, related to the upcoming millage, um, and we'll have, um, some more exciting things to talk about on Monday.
Thank you. Councilman Kathleen James, District Four?
Yes, I have, uh, three very quick, uh, items. Uh, first of all, District Four will have its first in-person community council meeting on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, at six P M at the New Mount Maria International Church, located at three thirteen West Walton Boulevard. That, again, is our first in-person meeting, uh, we're gonna have guests, we're gonna have food, so we really welcome you to come out and hear about the great things that are going on. My second message is about one of those things. Uh, when I took office, one of, one of my main objectives, uh, was to deal with the blight along Walton Boulevard, and the prime example was that I saw of a gas station at the corner of Jocelyn and Walton Boulevard. Well, it is down, and I want to commend all of the city, uh, folks, um, who took part in that. The last time I asked for an update, they said that, well, they were waiting on, uh, water resource, uh, they had to give them the buy-off because of the underground possibility of contamination underground and stuff, so they got it, it was, they did it very quickly, and I am just elated to see that after twenty years, we're elated to see that building down, and that it will be, uh, one of the marijuana, uh, buildings, uh, for, uh, the Walton, uh, district. So the third thing is, uh, I want to make a correction, that someone said that we voted to support the, uh, uh, issue that's on the ballot regarding, uh, taxes. We did not vote to support, we voted to put it on the ballot. And we voted, well, I, let me speak for me. I voted yes because I believe that the administration put forward a very reasonable, uh, uh, request. Uh, they gave the reasons, they gave the rationale for why that should be on the ballot, and I agreed that that is something that should be on the ballot, that residents should have that ability to make that decision. That is what we voted on. Uh, each of us have our own opinions in terms of whether or not, how we vote is our business, but we did not vote to support it, we voted to put it on the ballot. And so I want to clarify that, because sometimes, you know, when people start talking, uh, they mix up, you know, and they misrepresent really, uh, what, what you say and what you do. So I just want to clarify that. I believe residents have the responsibility to make that decision. I don't make it. I did say that I did not authorize that flyer to go out, uh, and I don't know why that would confuse anyone, because I just simply don't believe that it's my responsibility to tell people how to vote, but we voted to put that on the ballot because I believe that the residents have a right to make that decision, and I think they will make the right decision. Thank you. That's it.
District Five, Councilman Parker?
Thank you, brother president. First, I want to thank Pastor Mangum for coming and praying with us this evening. I want to thank all the pastors who have come thus far, who have prayed with us during city council. I think it shows a good mix of people who are involved and active in our city and our community. I want to thank the mayor and the deputy mayor for coming by our District Five CDC. Last Thursday, uh, we had a good discussion on a number of things that was concerning those in our district, and we thank you, those who came, and those who were blessed because they came and got their questions answered. Uh, want to, at, remind everybody about the Law and Courts Meeting, Monday, the twenty-four, what is it, twenty-fourth, at four P M. Uh, if you're interested in what we're doing, please come, it's in the, uh, Legislative, Legislative Council Chamber, Conference Room. Uh, we will be meeting there, and with that, I will say good night, Pontiac.
Thank you. Council President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington, District Six?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, I'd actually like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, I'll be pretty brief. Um, Weekcare Neighborhood Association had a monthly meeting this past week, and I'd just like to thank, uh, Mr. Jim Nash for coming out, uh, and brought his staff out to that meeting and was able to explain some of the things that's happened in the Water Research, uh, Department. Uh, GM Housing Neighborhood Association is having an event on October the twenty-second, from eleven to one. They're gonna celebrate those beautiful signs, uh, that a few organizations, uh, actually donated, uh, to that, to that part of, uh, the sixth district. I believe Venture Incorporated, and I, I don't know the other company that actually, uh, and GM, actually donated, uh, helped that neighborhood association get signs for their, for their neighborhood. If you, if you go along Perry, um, Jocelyn, Glenwood, you'll see these beautiful, beautiful signs of, of a neighborhood that's been here for over a hundred years. So, uh, I look forward to being at that event this, this, this Saturday. Uh, it's so many things, so, it's so many, uh, Halloween celebrations going on, so please make someone's Halloween celebration. They in every part of the city, um, I know I can't make them all, so I'm gonna try to make one, so please don't get upset with me if I don't come to your event for Halloween. But, uh, please have a, a, a great holiday, uh, season, and I just want to say that we all love you, and we know you love us, and we continue to work collectively to move this , uh, city in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven. Uh, to spring off of that point, Halloween, October thirty-first, is by far the most dangerous day of the year for child vehicle accidents. So obviously, kids, it's dark, kids are, you know, have obstructions from what they can see, they're excited, um, and there's just a, a ton of children, so if your neighborhood sees a lot of action, or even if you just see light action, please be especially careful, and when you or your family are, are exploring different parts, even if it's another community, please be safe. Please, please, don't let that joyous occasion, uh, turn tragic. Uh, the question was asked about, uh, district projects, so ultimately, each council member makes the decisions for their council projects. And, uh, what I and the council leadership, in consultation with Legislative Council Sharp, we just make sure that it's, it's, it's moving in the right direction, it's the, it's an appropriate use of, of resources, where they're, is, in many respects, is a sounding board. But ultimately, it's the decision of each city council member, and we do have larger numbers, um, than usual because there was a great deal unspent from the remainder of the last fiscal year. So some of those projects, uh, were able to come to life, and then some are rolling over into this fiscal year. And we'll just continue to communicate as a city council, let you know what's in the hopper, what gets concluded, uh, but then we'll review each budget year, is that the right amount? Because what we budgeted, you know, essentially for the year is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if you divide that seven ways, that's about twenty-one thousand dollars and change. And almost all of that was, was not spent from the, the, basically the transition to the new city council. So there's more than usual right now, um, but then what we'll just assess to see if it's, it's flowing well. We try and, uh, be transparent, communicate, and, and solicit ideas. And so at our different meetings, different ways, different council members use different, uh, District One and Two have some forums, others try and engage, uh, directly at meetings. It's to the, the tailoring of each city council member, and we'll continue to try and tailor it stronger and stronger, and, uh, make sure that those district projects benefit the, the districts where they're located. It might be confusing because the previous mayor used to have these community projects, there was a different funding process, and they had a different sort of methodology and what have you. That has come and gone, um, and so it might kind of seem like they blend together, uh, but these district projects have always existed, at least in recent budget years, and we're just trying to make full use of it, make the maximum impact for our districts. My final point tonight, I'll say thank you to Legislative Council Monique Sharp, Outreach Specialist Daryl Earl, for your service, uh, in support of the city council as we carry on the many, 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 um, demands and, and inquiries that come in, and thank you to City Clerk Garland Doyle and your team. Uh, your, a lot is asked of you, and there are new and innovative ways to try and make voting more accessible, and I will point out that in Oakland County, there's sixty-one cities, townships, and villages, Pontiac has currently the lowest rate of absentee ballot requests. So, um, I just want to put that out there in the universe, even though by percentage we might be down there, we don't have to stay in that, that bottom rung. We can take over Hazel Park, we can pass Royal Township, we can keep going, boop, 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 um, so that way everyone's voice is heard. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call on adjournment, Clerk Doyle.
Oh, yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker? Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Sixay?
That motion carries, we stand adjourned at eight oh four P M. Please be safe.